Good evening, everyone. It is October 20th, 2025. It's 5:30 in the Rockford Office School Board Boardroom. I would like to call tonight's meeting to order, and we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Makes my heart feel good. Thank you very much. We'll move on to board roll call. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Jamie Hilstrom here. Jessica Johnson here. Eric Gordy.
Present.
Beth Braska here. Kevin Shadine.
Is in transit.
And Chris Morgan.
Scheduled absence. Very good. So we do have quorum of the board. Thank you very much. Dr. Ridal Hoover, we have our agenda presented. Any changes from your side?
One really small item, Chair Gordy. In the extended field trip vacation for our jazz band, the dates were changed. The dates of the trips were indicated previous September, I'm sorry, February 7th and 8th of 2026. Those dates have been changed to February 21 and 22 of 2026. That is the only change. But that'll stay in consent, and we're just asking for that if people want to use that one.
Thank you so much. And then there's one other item that can be changed in here. I spoke with MSBA. We do have closed session in somewhere in here. There it is. C and D of item 10. We can combine those two since they both deal with the same statute with negotiation. And the line item in there will say teacher or EMR. Is it EMRs?
EMR.
EMR and superintendent contract negotiation. So we will only need one closed session for that agenda item. So with those changes, I'd appreciate a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as just discussed.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. There's a first. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Hilstrom. First and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
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 And that does carry unanimously. Next item is item number three, public comment. Checking to see there are no public comments this evening, so that item is closed. Consent agenda is presented for your review. The only thing, Dr. Ridal Hoover, there is an FFA field trip permission form on there. Glad to see we're able to send some of our students to nationals. I know previous years, new people here, previous years, we partnered with other schools to take one bus for transportation offset. So maybe something to explore in the future as we go into that area. Because I think it was Forest Lake and Rockford and like Monticello or someone like that all worked together to take one bus. So with that, tonight's consent agenda is there for you. Any other discussion? I'd appreciate a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. And a second, please.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Hilstrom. First and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda does carry unanimously. Dr. Ridal Hoover, superintendent report.
Thank you, Chair Gordy. The momentum that started with our August workshop week has continued through the fall. And as we emerge from MEA break, we are aligning our work from both an operational and instructional standpoint. Today, we have Reams principal, Ms. Brenda Nyhoo, who's here with us. We'll share about the start of the school from the elementary perspective. But before we hear from Brenda, I'd like to share the happenings at both Rockford Middle School and Rockford High School as submitted by their building principals. At RMSCES, students took a self-assessment on their own engagement for each class as they had prepared for their conference that took place on October 14th. 406 students took that assessment on engagement, and it's clear that our students are indicated engagement in their classroom and are active as respected for their teachers also agreeing with that. They're using the Engage to Learn scale, which includes having a scale posted in the classrooms, referencing it regularly, and giving students the opportunity to engage in reflecting on improving their own level of engagement. During the most recent staff development day, RMS staff examined student connectivity survey data. They also looked at FAST scores along with student grades during which students were in the greatest need for a parent-teacher conference. Grade-level teams connected with specific families directly to arrange the conferences, which will be taking place this week. With the remainder wrapping up, no later than November 14. This includes partnership with Mobile Hope and certain team members conferencing at Maple Hill on Tuesday, the 21st, for two hours early in the evening. Our math and ELA teams completed a data retreat where they spent time reviewing data by section and teacher, leaving with three takeaways that can help improve student outcomes. Additionally, they've created a schedule where language arts and math teachers will be routinely relieved of their boost responsibilities so they can intervene with students across multiple unique-based areas for specific interventions. Groups are based on FAST and classroom assessment data. Additionally, Amber Beatty, our edis teacher, will be leading grade-level data and donuts work for all non-ELA. RMSCS also partnered with the Department of Learning and Innovation for testing called CAPD testing, which is a literacy-based assessment. At the high school, Mr. Menard's proud report that it was a successful and vibrant homecoming week, complete with dress-up themed days, coronation, flag football, athletic events, and of course, the dance. He mentioned that while we didn't win the big game, Mr. Menard, with the help of our cheerleaders, gave the fans something to cheer for at the end of the game as they successfully flew him to the student section's delight. There was a picture there, but I don't have it for the visual here. Building-wide goals have been set by their respective build team in the areas of student engagement, instructional alignment, and data-backed student support. Additionally, Mr. Menard set his principal goals across the district's five strategic directions to help with staff and students in achieving those goals. The high school early college and career program, of which you're going to be hearing a lot more about in the coming months, Launch Your Future, has changed the way college and career prep has been discussed with students and families, centering on the six career clusters. They've grown that from four at one point now to 21 pathways running under development. As a remainder, this dovetails with our IB career pathways program. And preliminary discussions are underway with all departments in implementing registration. Yes, we're already talking about registration for next year, which will take place in December. Operationally, from the district standpoint, our annual fiscal audit is on track, and plans are for the audit presented at either the November or December school board meetings. Initial reports from the auditors indicate a clean audit, and through verbal conversations with our auditing firm, they are very pleased and appreciative of our accounting measures. We continue to educate and inform our residents with respect to the November 4th levy questions. I have spoken to some parents and residents, both in person and on the telephone, and also had the wonderful opportunity to visit with a group of seniors between their exercise classes at the RCC last week. In addition to that, we have an open house scheduled for this coming week that Chair Gordy and Reed might mention later. Now representing to a larger group of our senior residents tomorrow morning, also two groups of ECFE Parents Guardians on October 27th and 28th. I want to thank the residents for their questions, inquiries, and support with respect to the levy proposals. They are critical, and I really do encourage all residents to become informed. We also continue our work recently with respect to our school calendars, with the school year '26-'27 calendar coming for board approval tonight. And per the board's recommendation at our most recent work session, the calendar committee will be reconvening in early 2026 to make some adjustments and then ultimately bring forward the school year '27-'28 calendar for board approval. Negotiations continue with our teacher barding group, but I'm happy to report that we are very close to a tentative agreement. Director McNulty will provide a brief update on the status of those negotiations a little later in this meeting. Instructionally, our teaching faculty recently engaged in our October professional development day, and I continue to be impressed with the engagement and commitment to continuous improvement and alignment as it relates to our instructional roadmap. Points of emphasis regarding our instructional work, again, include what you've heard already, the student and teacher engagement component, and the use of data to drive core instruction, as well as targeted instructions to specific students. That is new, something we're really working on this year where we're drilling down to the individual student. Our district-wide instructional Kevin also met recently as we worked to strengthen our alignment, maintain transparency, and brainstorm best instructional practices. I've also been busy working on our comprehensive achievement and student readiness report, which is due to MDE November. I plan to post that report to our learning innovation webpage later this week, and then present it to our district curriculum instruction assessment committee on November 20th and this board as well on November 24th. Recently, I also attended meetings with our friends and colleagues at MREA, Northwest Suburban, AMSD, and Masico. I also participated with my MASA colleagues in some professional development work. In addition, I also planned and served with the MASA Legislative Committee, where we started our initial planning on the 2026 legislative platform. I also had the opportunity to visit recently with our county SRO supervisors. I engaged in our quarterly Safe Schools meeting and met with our activities directors, principals, and superintendents at the quarterly Wright County Conference meeting. I also met recently with our school principals to discuss their goals for this school year and in work with members of the board. We also met to review, edit, and draft annual policies. And our finance committee met to preview preliminary quarterly financial figures. And our Rockford CFO, Bridget Peterson, will be visiting with us in November to present that meeting to the group as a whole. In closing, it has been an incredible start to the school year this fall. We're excited to continue this work and momentum for the remainder of this calendar year and beyond. That concludes Maya Kober's superintendent report.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Any questions for Dr. Ridal Hoover or clarification? No? Okay, I see Beth shaking her head. That's good. All right, so then we'll move on. Dr. Ridal Hoover, is the Assurance of Compliance as an annual object that we do review and approve annually?
That is correct. And the statement of assurance comes from the Department of Education. We do several trainings with our staff throughout the year that are required, one of which is more than required. It's a state statute that's around maltreatment of minors, so all of our staff have to be in compliance with that. We did some cleanup last week, and we are in a good place. So I will be submitting the Assurance of Compliance to MDE sometime this week, and I wanted to let the board know that we're coming forward, so I'm looking for your approval to do so.
Thank you very much. So this is an item that we need to take action on, so I would. Any questions, first of all, for Dr. Ridal Hoover? None? Very good. So I would appreciate a motion to approve the Assurance of Compliance to state federal law prohibiting discrimination.
I will make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Shadine. And I need to mention for the record, at 5:36, Mr. Shadine did join the meeting. My apologies for not mentioning that, but I appreciate you being here. So there's a first, Eric Gordy will second. So there's a first and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
And that does carry unanimously. Thank you so very much. Moving on to item number six. The reason why I have so much fun today is Nahus, welcome to our meeting tonight.
Thank you. I'm going to do a little introduction, and then I'm going to turn it over to these wonderful folks. I'm going to take you back to last summer. Last summer, we spent a little time under the sea, and we walked into a performance of a packed house, and it was packed. Several of these students spent one week preparing The Little Mermaid, and I'm going to allow them to speak about their experience. And I have Alicia Hall here, who is our theater teacher. I said to her at the end of her performance, when I gave her a hug, I said, "This is only year one," because it was incredible what these kids put together in one week's time. I think I've been for the next week just based on her performance. It was so fun and so well done. And so I'm going to turn this over to them and allow them to speak about their opportunity and all the things that they did in The Little Mermaid this summer.
Thanks, Brenda. So I thought I'd start by giving you a little context of what is this theater camp that we're talking about, and then, like Brenda said, we'll turn it over to the kids to share their own experience and answer any questions that you may have for them. So my name is Alicia Hall. I am the theater teacher at Reams and at the high school. And I have come from a long history of small schools and creating theater programs. So my hometown of Randolph, I noticed, did not have any opportunities for younger students to be involved in the arts until they got into high school. So about seven years ago, I created this summer camp just as an opportunity to build our program and continue to encourage kids to put themselves out there and build those confidence skills. So we ran this, I'm still continuing to do it at Randolph, but last year was my first year here, and I was so excited when Brenda gave me the go-ahead to be able to do the camp here at Rockford, and it was so successful in its first year. Our first year, we had 45 kids sign up for this opportunity, and we have a max of 60, and I think we may hit that 60-max this year as well, just because it was so much fun. But we start promoting it all the way in January. I announced to the kids what the show we're doing. We do a flash mob. We get everyone really excited, involved, and then we go into auditions. So the kids get the experience of an actual audition and coming in front of our directors, which is me and three other people, and showcasing the skills that they have. And based on the talents that they have and the skills they're showcasing, we then cast the show as if it is a real production. The students are given their script at that moment as soon as they find out who they are, and it is their responsibility to memorize their lines before camp. And honestly, I was very surprised to find every single kid actually memorized their lines. Sometimes that can be a struggle, but they take this very seriously, and they very much came in with a willingness to work for the camp. So the camp is divided into four different sections. We teach acting, singing, dancing, and art. And we do theater games. We'll rotate between learning a song for music and then learning the dance for it and then putting it on stage. Because they're also a part of the scenic aspect of things, so they help create costumes, they help create the sets, so really that they feel invested in the whole process of it. And like Brenda said, it is a week-long camp, so we see them from 8:00 to 2:00, and within that time, we are rotating, teaching them these things. And then on Friday, we put up a show, and it's an hour-long show. So it's really impressive, the work that these kids can do when they're passionate about something. And like Brenda said, we have a full house. We were almost completely sold out. We had no space available for people. So the fact that we had that support from the community and from the Rockford staff was huge for us, and I know I'm personally excited to see where this program is going to continue to grow, but I think that would be a great time for me to turn it over to some of my kids. So when you guys come up, let's have you introduce yourself. Okay? Tell us what grade you're in, and then tell us what role you have, and then tell us why you did theater camp, or why did you like it, and anything you might have learned. And then anything that you would like to ask follow-up questions at the very end. We can have you guys raise questions for that as well. All right. We'll make sure to do this. All right, go ahead.
Okay, works.
Okay.
My name's Kinley, and I'm in fourth grade. I played Sebastian. And I joined theater camp because it was just, I thought it would be a fun experience. I've never done a play before, so.
Was it fun?
Yeah, it was super fun.
Will you do it again?
Probably, yeah. I will most likely do it.
Okay, that's a better ringing indoors.
Love it.
Hi, my name is Max, and I'm in fourth grade, and I was role King Triton.
Why did you join camp, Max?
Because I felt like, because my parents encouraged me to do it, and I felt like it would be the right form.
Was it a little fun? Yeah?
Did you have one of those big staffs like you have?
So cool.
Right away, it was a little out of my comfort zone, but my parents pushed me to do it, and I ended up making the decision.
That's wonderful. That is so awesome.
Good for your parents.
Thank you, Max.
Thanks, Max. I hope you stick with it.
Yeah.
My name is Annika, and I'm in third grade, and I played in.
Testing, testing.
Can you use that big earphones you have?
Yeah, that big, huge, giant one.
My favorite memory of being in a Little Mermaid play was seeing how tall the actress that played King Triton was compared to my height. It made me look really small, which made everything. This year, I can't wait to make a new memories. I'm not sure what will perform, but I'm sure it will be fun. The good things about being in theater is that you make friends with people in your grade and other groups. Performing helps you be less shy and get to get to know others first. And also, it helps you develop your skills. It gives you confidence and helps you get with it. I'm thankful for my teachers in the high schools that helped last year. I can't wait for this summer.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I love that you had that all prepared too, by the way. That was pretty awesome. Nice work.
My name's Abby. I'm in fourth grade, and I played the role of Ariel. And I joined the play because I've been in two other plays before, and I thought it would be fun to like just be in a play and be able to sing and dance with my friends.
Thank you. You enjoyed it? Had a lot of fun?
Do it again.
Do it again.
For sure. Every year.
Can I interrupt a minute? Before we hear from the rest of the kids, would you describe to the board how, because we just had an Ariel and we had another Ariel. Would you describe how that worked? Because it was so fantastic that so many kids got to play those different roles.
Yes, absolutely. So obviously, expecting one trial to memorize 100 lines is a lot of responsibility, so I try to break it up by splitting up the lead roles into multiple parts. So we have four Aries, we had two Ericks, we had two Sebastians. Any lead role, I definitely try to split up. So one, the kids have less responsibility coming into camp, and also with more opportunity for these kids to have that lead role, which is really important in the development of learning to love theater as well.
Hi, my name's Alexa. I'm in fourth grade, and I played the role of a scuttlebird and a sailor. I liked theater camp because it was a lot about the role you had, it was about the people around you, and everybody there made you feel included, and they made you feel special and valuable. And all the high school helpers were great, and they were really fun to play with, and Missy and Mr. Jim were great directors.
So did you have two different parts?
Yes.
Wow. Did you have costume change?
Yeah.
It's hard to be a bird and a sailor.
Do it again, for sure.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And I would just like to also give a thank you to the parents. The parents really stepped up and helped us out this year with our first year. Any questions they had, they were sent right away, and they were always responsive. So thank you to my parents for letting your kids, let me steal all your kids for a week in the summer, and thank you for bringing them here today, too. I think it's really important for the community to hear their experiences and their voices as well.
Ms. Johnson?
I just want to share with all you kiddos in theater. I have two kids that went through the theater program here in Rockford. Keep going out for the plays, the high school plays, whilst they're middle school, high school plays. They're the best, and you will love it. My kids will do it. And again, if they were asked, they, wonderful experience, so keep it up. Super fun.
Hey, don't steal all that. I did, too. And if we ever get that adult opportunity, then I'd have to go out to Maine.
Right?
To do mayor theater. Thank you, guys. Truly appreciate it.
So fun.
Any other questions from the board or accolades? No, but thank you, guys.
Thanks for starting the program.
Bring it back. Yeah, absolutely. All right, that was excellent. Ms. Nahus, principal report. And just to share for those that may remain, so the principal report is a great opportunity for the board to hear about each school's goals, progress, celebrations through the year. These reports are all to stay connected with the important work that's happening in each building and how they align to our shared strategic plan. At the same time, the reports are meant to be a broad overview and not granular and deep into day-to-day operations, which allows us to remain focused on governance and help our administrators maintain the day-to-day practices within their building. So just wanted to share where we are and why we do this. And it's so good to get a hug of encouragement before you go.
He's like, she's going to need this.
Kill it.
She's going to the sharks.
Seriously, and I cannot say enough about the play this past summer. It was so much fun. I was floored, absolutely floored, and we had to hire those kids, very, very good. So I'm going to share our sit goals with you tonight, and we're going to start with just some general updates on what's going on at Reams.
Beth, can you see the presentation? Yes, good.
Yes, I can.
Thank you.
I can hang out here and meet you.
Just tell me.
So we'll talk just a little bit about the beginning of the year. I would love to echo what Jeff said. We've had a great start to this school year, just really smooth, and the kids are all hungering down, and I think I've heard from many staff members, I don't think we've had a smoother start to our school year in how many years? And I would agree, it's been wonderful. So we started with Rocket Ready Days this year. Those are our formally assessment days, and the reason that we are calling it Rocket Ready Days now is because we took the assessments off of Rocket Ready Days to give the kids a little more opportunity to get their feet on the ground and hopefully do a better job on their FAST testing. We just started to say, are we really getting the data that we are looking for? We have kids that come into class and they're identified as a student who needs additional support, and a week or two into school, teachers are like, "I don't think so." And, you know, they didn't do real well on their FAST assessment. They might have been new to our building. You know, they're in and out of the media center with other kids, and they're distracted. We just said, you know what? Let's maybe not do that and see what happens. And so we gave them, like I said, a couple weeks to get their feet on the ground, and then gave those assessments. Interestingly enough, in digging through the data, they did do a little bit better. There's always a little bit of a summer slide, but not as much as we've seen in the past, and I think because we gave the kids a chance to really just focus on that test. And so that was interesting to see. We had very successful, lots and lots of attendance, and those kids that don't make it, we catch them up in terms of getting their picture taken and bus safety and all the things that they do on that day. So it's a wonderful way for our families to sit down one-on-one with their teacher, especially. I don't think my teachers would ever give that part up because they get to know the families right away. And so again, Rocket Ready Days will continue, and like I said, we're going to continue to look at that data and say, is what we're doing for kids giving them a little bit more time to assess better? On October 10th, a couple Fridays ago or last Friday, we had the kindness retreat for our fourth graders. This is something through Youth Frontiers, and Youth Frontiers has been coming to our building. I've been there 20 years, probably 18 of those years, and we do the kindness retreat with our fourth graders, kick off the fall with them, because we get the most out of them then in terms of kindness. And they really dig deep in terms of what are they looking for, and what kind of school do they really want to go to, and what kind of school do they want to set up for kindness? And I always tell my fourth graders, you're the leaders of the building, and we look to you to kind of set that tone. And we have a whole group of high schoolers that come in that day, and they are our retreat small group leaders. So we partner with the high school every time we do this, and that is absolutely invaluable. I spoke with both of the leaders who came from Youth Frontiers at the end of the day, and they said, every kid was engaged. And I said, yeah, every kid was engaged. Nobody said, "I'm not doing this," or "I don't want to do this." They said, "Your leaders were engaged. That doesn't always happen." And so they said, "Yeah, we'll come back to Rockford anytime." And so we had a really successful day on that Friday with kindness retreat. The other thing I want to highlight is on Thursday, we have a site visit with Dover Iota. They are coming because they are. They are coming because they are looking to become an arts magnet school. And so they called us out of the blue and said, would you ever host us for part of a day? And we said, yeah. They said, we are super impressed with everything we're seeing in your school. And so we would love to come and spend a little time with you. You're like one of the only elementary schools that's a public school that's an arts magnet school. And we were kind of like, hmm, actually not. So we sent to a whole bunch of names and schools that they could go maybe to the morning. And I asked them if they would come in the afternoon because Darren teaches in the morning. And I want to make sure that our arts coordinator is free and able to work with them as well. So it sounds like they're bringing four people and they're going to pick our reins and we're gonna do everything from the inside you starts to be an arts magnet school to here's the quintessential after 22 years. So we're excited about that visit. And we're gonna pop them into some classrooms and see some arts lessons and bring them to the theater department and just share all the things that we do in our school. So those are kind of three big highlights, I guess, of the year. There's lots and lots of little things that are happening and bigger things happening though kind of lead into my presentation as well. So these are our SIP goals. And the one thing I guess I would preface before I start is, you know, this is my 20th year as a principal in this district. And I honestly can say I have never felt as aligned as I have this year. From here is your strategic plan to here is the building SIP goals, to here are our principal goals, to here are the teacher curriculum goals, write down helping kids. And I will credit Mr. Reig over for that. I really will. And just the systems and the alignment. And I was really thinking about that as I was putting this together. And I've just never felt this funnel aligned in the 20 years I've been here. And that's a really fun feeling. It's a really fun feeling. So I'm super excited about that and just where we're headed. So our first goal has three parts as we have in the past. And the first goal is that during the 25-26 school year, educators will continue to evaluate and refine standards alignments with their teaching focus. Classroom teachers specifically are gonna curriculum map with CKLA, which is our new reading curriculum. Interventionists and special education staff are gonna evaluate structures for addressing student needs. What does that look like for kids? How do we really get down and help every student who needs additional support? And then the specialists are gonna continue to curriculum map in K through 4. This will be happening during PLS and common planning time. All of my classroom teachers have 90 minutes of common planning time this year. And that is structured into the schedule. And they literally have laid out, these are the three days. So we're gonna do 30 minutes three times a week. They have laid out those days and are meeting. And they are going to go through and really talk about, it's really for the reading curriculum and to work together. And not only do some mapping, but also to just go through, okay, we're on this unit. How is this working for you? What are you doing here? What about this? We had trainers come back in on Wednesday of last week from CKLA and split them up into the primary groups and into the secondary groups. And it was really fun to pop back and forth between those two sessions and listen to the questions they had about, okay, so I'm giving this assessment now, how do I? The trainers were like, oh yeah, but here's what you're gonna wanna do. And so because they've been into it a little while already, now they have really, really good questions that they could ask because they've understood how some of this goes already. And a lot of really meeting their needs from the trainers. The trainers were like, do you need help with this or are you good to go? And they were like, nope, we got this. So then let's move on and give you what you need. So super valuable morning with our trainers last Wednesday. There is a landing page that we will have. I didn't put it on, but I did print one out that has all their common planning time. And then they are putting, just documenting every single meeting that they have. Where did you meet? What did you talk about? What are those just few bullet points? So we can see, you know, follow that plan and trajectory of what they're doing each time they meet in their common planning time. So that is the first part of goal one. Yes.
CKLA is, is it?
It's a new reading.
Thanks. I knew it was Language Arts, but I'm like, how is that?
The acronym is Core Knowledge Linguers.
Okay, sorry. Couldn't remember. It was Language Arts.
You just say that and you assume everybody knows, right?
It becomes your language.
It does. It does. Exactly. Yep, you can pop through this.
Thank you. Just needed context.
So our second, the second part is the Engagement Continuum. And all of our buildings are working on this. I know you've heard about this with Mr. Warzaka as well. During the 25-26 school year, staff and students will learn and implement a building-wide engagement continuum. And so Courtney, I'm gonna have you pop to the next one. So this is kind of what this will look like in the elementary school. We are working on this. This is not a done deal yet. But I wanted to give you an idea of what we're working on. What does it look like to be actively engaged? What does it look like to be passively engaged or not engaged? And you can see that one is colorful, one is kind of in the gray. One is thumbs up, thumbs down, you know? And it's, this will be not only what does it look like for kids? And Courtney, I'm gonna be back up one if they at least give us a slide. Oh, no, we didn't. You're okay. You're okay. Yep. So, no, you're right. You're right. So it's, they're all listed there. So they also have some verbiage there about what it looks like to be engaged and what it looks like on a daily basis. And we're gonna really try and focus on math and reading specifically. Obviously, we'll look at this in our specialist classes and things too. But we'll do some evaluation with our math and reading. And so it's just kind of overall the goal. It's gonna be introduce the Engagement Continuum to staff. So we'll introduce this and talk through this. We're creating common visuals, which we have. And obviously we have more pictures for elementary kids because they need that, the pictures. And we actually will have some common lessons that we're going to do. So because you have to teach kids how to do this, right? And especially at that younger level, I'm a kindergartner. What does it mean to be engaged? I liken this a little bit to when Jeff and I met to go through my goals. I said, I don't even know if you're aware, we did this, but we brought every grade level down at the beginning of the school year this year during their specialist time. And we said, we're gonna talk about what the expectations are in the school. Not a lot of runners. And I said, we gotta start working really hard on how do we walk in school? How do we act respectfully? And so we literally practiced it. And I said, why? Because I said, if I told you how to do a fire drill or I told you how to do, you know, like a lockdown practice, but we never practiced it, would you know what to do? And they're like, hmm, maybe, but not as well as if we practiced it. Yep, so you might think it's silly that we're practicing walking today, but we're gonna practice it. And kids are stopping themselves. They'll be running and they stop and they look and they'll, oh, like, I get it. I'm not supposed to be doing this. That will happen here too, but we have to teach them how to do it. We have to teach them, what does it look like to be engaged? What does it look like when you're not engaged? So there'll be a lesson. We've already pulled some videos and some things using kids that we'll be using. Now you can go to the next one, sorry. And then we'll do an evaluation tool. And that's looking like potentially, it does work good. That's looking potentially like once a week, we'll say, how engaged were you this month? And they'll be able to do this on a specific tool. Right now, we have some teachers that are playing with using CSO and trying to put this there so it's really conducive to kids. So that'll be our engagement work for the year on that second part. And then our third part for the, there we go, for our first goal is that we will, during the 25-26 school year, Reams will strengthen the MTSS process and Student Achievement Plan by maintaining and refining the data, review structures established in the 24-25 school year. So we're gonna identify opportunities to improve effectiveness and efficiency. We're gonna facilitate student ownership of learning. So they're gonna start to take on some of their own learning and set some goals and say, how do I improve my FAST scores? How will I improve? Or look at my MCA scores if they're MCA takers and improve those scores. And then we're gonna track progress throughout the year. And then we're gonna implement Target Student Achievement Action Plans for identified students. That's that drilled-down piece that Jeff had shared with you. And I'm gonna share some of this because this is really fun to look at. So they have a Student Assistance Plan that we're calling it the SAMP. Courtney, I'll have you pull that up. Yep. Just, yeah, it's down. So here's the Student Assistance Plan. We'll look at that and say, is it math? Is it reading? Yep. What does that look like? What's the concern? Where's the barrier? What's the action we're gonna take? And then if you can click on the Observation to Intervention. So we're gonna look at what kind of interventions are there? Do they need paper? Do they need digital? Do they need it written? Are we segmenting things for a student? There's so many interventions that we can look at there if they're struggling with content, if they're struggling with this, if they're struggling. So it's not only what are we doing for students, but it's tools for teachers to go in and say, what can I do to help this child? And then if you'll go back one, Courtney. Or just go back. Yep, go back, just the ones, yeah, 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 right there. And then scroll down farther. Yep, so then the template for Reams. And so then we start data tracking. They're following directions. They're showing effort. And if you click on like following directions, here's your whole tracking sheet. So this is more than just a, we're gonna write a quick plan. This goes deep for kids that are struggling. And I called Courtney today and I said, I have lots of links. I wanna be able to show the board this because it's pretty cool to say, how deep can we go to really support a child? Okay, now we can go back to-
Very closely aligned to the high school.
Yes, yes.
And did they, did you guys work with Jeff to get it in to keep a permanent digital record of it?
Yes, that's planned. And because it's so hard, because all of a sudden you say, okay, now you pass this child on to the next grade level and we can't start again. And we've done all these wonderful things for a child. Now we follow, we follow it.
And I meant, I meant Mr. Keen. It's, sorry.
Absolutely. No, I know what you meant.
No terminology there.
You know, Chair already mentioned, you know, this is a line in the high school. This is, we always say things don't happen on accident. There's a lot of intentionality around what's going on at all three sites. There's, we call this coordinated uniqueness around how we're doing some of the things, but we're doing things very similarly. And what I love about what you just displayed there is, and you heard this a little bit in the Superpan's report, where we're talking about, you know, core, you know, comprehensive groupings, but we're also talking about individual kids. And so this is doing just that. And as we slide through and progress through this thing, you're gonna see next year, as we talk about the next iteration of Instruction Roadmap, how do we really personalize the experience? I mean, down to this strand for this particular lesson and how we look at the data. I say this often, we're some kids' last best chance. And if they fall through the cracks early, getting them caught up is really hard. So I really wanna applaud the work that's going on at the elementary school right now. Because I know that there's been times in the past where he would want you to look at data. We're doing this in a really strategic way right now. And the buy-in from the Bilt to administration is all there. And so that, a lot of what you're showing here is just that work.
Yeah. And I said that to Jeff when I met with him at my goals. I walked in and I just said, I'm so proud of my Bilt team right now. I mean, my Bilt team's amazing too, but my Bilt team is doing heavy lifting. And it's all of the work around this and it's really impressive. And like I said, you know, we are, we're drilling down to every child. And then it's also can be looked at from interventionists to classroom teachers to everybody saying, okay, what are we doing for this kid to really help him, to really help him? So that's goal number one. Oh, that's me. Sorry.
I just wanted to make sure what's gonna go through again.
Okay, I think I did it. There we go. Awesome. So goal number two, it looks really similar to our goal to last year. Students in grades three and four will be given the My Savers survey in the fall and spring regarding their sense of belonging at Reams. And students in grades K through four will receive weekly guidance lessons with the counselors during the 24-25 school year. The counselors have administered the My Savers survey already this fall. And then letters are sent home to parents prior to the survey as an opt-out option. And guidance lessons are provided by the counselors to each class in grades K through four weekly. Lessons include topics of connectedness. And I have a counselor who's on her term to leave until December and we were unable to fill that position with a long-term sub. So those ladies got together early this summer and said, okay, if we can't fill this sub, what are we gonna do? And we decided that taking the tier one students, which is probably most important, is what we're gonna do. And so Katie Reynolds, who is my current counselor in-house, is doing every single guidance lesson, every single week with every single classroom. That's no small feat. And then she's working individually with kids. It's the small groups that they're letting go until Allison returns because something's gotta give. But I applaud her for taking on every single one of those lessons because that's not easy work. And you know, by the time we get data, I don't come to the last board meeting where I can share this with you, but I do wanna share this because this is pretty cool. Last year, just to see that student connectedness, there were 725 classroom lessons done in SEL-related topics. That's social, emotional, learning-related topics. 123 small group sessions based on the My Savers data. 2,327 individual meetings based on My Savers or based on student need. And 344 sensory breaks with kids. And those are our assist students that require some of that. So our counselors are keeping very, very detailed, accurate data. And that's kind of fun to see when you think, okay, they're doing great work. What are they doing here at all days? And so like I said, I don't get to come and share that at the very end of the year, but I wanted to share that with you this year because that's pretty impressive to know how many students are touched by a counselor. It's pretty neat. So third goal that we have is by the end of the school year, 25% of the students who tested in the some risk or high-risk categories in math and reading, that's in FAST bridge data, will demonstrate growth by either moving into the low-risk or some-risk category or by increasing their score by at least five points within their current risk category as measured by FAST testing. Here's why we did that, you know? And we, everybody has this same goal in all three buildings and we talked a lot about this. Increasing or that 20, moving 25% of the students is important. But what about those kids who, and I actually have the FAST score, the chart right here. There are some grade levels that there's like a 20 or 25-point difference. Well, if they improve by 15 points, but they're still in that high risk, are we giving them any credit for doing that improvement? Do you know what I mean? And so that's where the increasing their score by at least five points comes in. So I'm also gonna share our start-year data. So in kindergarten, top is reading, bottom is math. We had 95 students tested in reading, 96 in math. Why is that? We had one move away. And so we lost a kindergartner between math and reading testing. And we had the kids that fell into some or high-risk were 33 students. And the goal then is 8.25 when you're looking at that percentage. So you can go through and look at all that. First grade, we had the same thing, 115 were tested in reading, 114 in math. I had a young lady who is out for a health condition and has not returned yet and left after reading and didn't test in math. Otherwise, everybody tested in both of those. And so like I said, as we looked at that, you know, initially even the teachers felt like, wow, 25%, that's a lot, until you drill down to the numbers, okay, that's 8.25 students, really nine. Because you're not going to go backwards. That's 14.5 students or 15, you know? And when you start looking at that, it becomes very dealable to say, how can we improve that data? And to help, to help kids move into that, that next category. And that's all I got for you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I like the, I mean, core tenants of PBIS, whatever learning opportunity you have, you can't expect a kid unless you explicitly teach them how to. Right? Right? So-
Absolutely.
Appreciate you saying those words earlier. Similar way, budgets.
And you can do that for your staff as well. It's like, okay, they're not doing what we want them to do. Have we told them? Have we told them what we expect? Right? We do that with kids. Why wouldn't we do that with staff? Why wouldn't we do that, you know? I say that before I observe a teacher. Here is, why would we be observing you on? Here is, are the categories? Here's the rubric. You know what? I want to know. Kids want to know, right? So we have to tell them.
And the tel show practice is a way.
Yep, absolutely.
I get that at home all the time. Dishwasher, no. Any questions, comments for Ms. Niasse?
I have a question about moving the five points within their current risk category. For fast testing, if they were advancing on the normal track, do they, are the risk category numbers different? Or would they be moving up anyway, just as moving?
They should be moving up anyway, but is it, would it necessarily be out of? I'm going to pull, pull one of these up and just give you an example. So like, we'll say, if I pull up reading in third grade, the sum risk is 477 for winter testing, 477 to 497. So that's 20 points, right? So if we're expecting a kid to move 20 points, that can be a specific amount of grade levels even. So that's a lot.
Right, but like, okay, so for second grade for reading, what is the number in that same category?
462 to 480.
462. So they would be expected to move, I mean, even if they were at the very bottom of some risk, from second grade to third grade, they would be expected to move almost 15 points. So is that five points in addition to that 15?
No, it's five points within or 25% of all students.
I hear what you're asking because there's an annual rate of growth.
Right.
And so there are points, that is, that is a really good question because if it's five points and that actually puts them further back.
Further back, right.
It is something to investigate on that.
Okay, yeah.
But the idea is to have them increase. If their growth rate is growing up two grade levels, that's probably a little much to ask.
Right.
But, so yes, you are advancing, there's an expectation of your grade level advancement per year as well.
Right, exactly. Yeah, I get what you're asking, yeah, 100%. So that'll-
Yep.
Pulling up and keeping up are hard things, right? Because you want to keep those kids that are on the edge.
Yeah.
Keep them up, right? Pull up, keep up.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and last year, what we saw was, we saw kids grow. We also saw some kids regress.
Yeah.
And as I've talked to our staff, I said, you know, we can't control how kids come to us, but we can control how they do when they get with us. And for them to go backwards, that's on us. And so our, our goal is to eliminate or dramatically reduce anyone going backwards, including what Brooke Hilstrom just mentioned about that rate of growth.
And do we start to challenge them a little in saying, let's see if we can improve our score from last time? Let's see what, you know, I mean, kids get excited about that kind of stuff.
That's, that's part of the work is to be motivated to take an MCA or a FAST test, which really doesn't do a lot for them. The high school's got some pretty cool motivators going, but it's, it's a little more challenging to motivate, you know, some of our younger students at times. So make it a little bit of a competition. And say, this is what you got last time, can you beat it? And I do believe that that motivation plays a part in student success. And so we're going to be talking to our kids about that. So these aren't just going to be things that they do and we hope they do better. It's, they're part of this now. And so, you know, game on.
And it all falls into that engagement and it all falls into, and you just all can do it. So.
Thank you very much. Any other things? Very good. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And appreciate you bringing your kiddos along with you.
They're pretty fun.
There they are.
They sure make you open your eyes and go.
Moving along, we'll go to 9A levy update. Pat Bradhooper.
Yeah, I don't know if you've heard, but we have a levy coming up.
Oh.
On November the 4th. I've said this before and I know I'm speaking to a lot of the Kool-Aid drinkers here in this room here right now. This is, this is essential for us to move forward as a school district. We will make do with what we have if it does, if neither are successful. But right now, and I mentioned a couple of things, we've had some, we have some events coming up. I want to really commend and thank the community group Rocket Vote. They've done amazing work in, in sharing the message. I did get a couple of emails asking from residents, could I please help them, you know, get vote yes signs? And the answer to that is no, I can't. We don't do that. But I said, if you, you know, find the groups that do, you could certainly, you know, that, our, our advocacy as a school district is information. It is, you know, sharing the message and so forth. And, but there is obviously that the group Rocket Vote that is, that is advocating on behalf of Passage. So we'll continue to, to share messaging around this and information with any and all. I feel the momentum is very strong right now in the community, whether it be signs or folks that I've come in contact with. And really, I can tell you, I kind of do a commercial with whoever comes and visits with me, whether they're coming to talk about that or not. And to a person so far, I have not met one person who says, yeah, I don't think that's a good investment. So I'm feeling, I'm feeling good about it. Again, as I mentioned, that there is an event tomorrow morning for seniors. I'm at the high school, which I'm really excited about. And then we have another event on Wednesday or Thursday.
Thursday.
Thursday evening that I'm also very excited about. That's more of an open house Q and A rather than a presentation. Tomorrow's is a presentation. The visit with the seniors last week between the exercise groups, I caught some coming in, some going out. We had one of our staff members was kind enough to make some goodies for the group. And so very positive in what we're hearing from members of the community. Recently sent out the, the required mailer. That did hit each, each resident household, I believe. I haven't had much feedback from residents since that has come out. But I know that it arrived here, so I know that it went, it went out and was delivered. So we have a lot going on. It's going to be a sprint to the finish line here. I'm hoping that the turnout is strong. The school sites are sharing the information with, with their, with their families as well. And so we'll, we'll see where it lands. But it will be a significant assistance to maintaining things in our district. I do want to share that, you know, in the event that it does not pass, we have propped lots of things that would need to be cut. And that will be coming to the board if that, if that does occur. And we meant what we said when we said these things will be potentially cut because we aren't going to afford to do it. That is my update on the levy. Literature's been out, videos are coming out periodically as well. And again, momentum is good. The feedback has been, also been positive and now we're in the home stretch.
Do you have one more mailer from the district coming yet? Targeted mailer or just a mailer?
I'm going to need to call Courtney for that answer.
Yes, there is a postcard that is coming out yet. I believe that's going out next week. And that is to parents, dispatch.
Any questions for Dr. Ryder Hooper? And I believe the community Q and A is at Rachel's place, correct? Community restaurant?
Yep.
People can come and show up and-
We encourage any and all folks to show up.
Buy some cheese curds.
Buy some cheese curds.
Yeah.
Support local Wisconsin economy. And make our chair very happy. So that is scheduled for six o'clock and until people decide they want to go home and on Wednesday evening.
Excellent. Good deal. All right. Very good. Thank you for that updated information. We will move on to number letter, I don't know, something 8B, correct?
8B.
8B negotiations update. Mr. McNulty, welcome.
I've been waiting so patient.
Oh, yeah. As you seen, just to give you a little backtrack, we met again today for the VAMIS. So we had a mission meeting. We have scheduled another meeting for next Monday, 3:00 PM also. So the handle to have an update is slightly changed, but not much. Everything is profoundly the same. We are reviewing three more language items. Again, just did a few more discussions I've talked through today on it. Some fine tuning, two from the district side, one from the MR side. And that should look good probably to wrap that up hopefully next week unless we have a discrepancy in something we find there. And then the financial side, that's gotten really close. I know our CFO, Bridgette, and Michael Todd are working closely on that again tomorrow morning. So we should be hopefully next Monday, trying to get some calls there. Otherwise, it's been a very good negotiations, uh, session, spelled that way. It's been a good group to work with and I think that's mutual on both sides because we have three, well, four members here that are part of that. So just going to really kind of, as you look over, if you have any questions on any of the information that's been provided to in the document.
Do you want to have questions for Mr. McNulty? Any additions from the committee at large for that? Truly appreciate your time because it's not like work, as well as the person sitting in the back of the room. Appreciate your time on that too.
I would make a comment. I want to, you know, express thanks to Mike and all of our negotiators here because especially lately, this has been a relatively heavy lift and everyone's contributed. So I shared this earlier in the negotiations here as well. Everyone's got their hands involved in it in a, in a really good way. We believe that by the end of next week, we will likely have a TA.
Done.
And we're, we're, we're feeling very confident that we'll be coming forward to the board for board approval of a ratified contract at the November meeting.
Everyone's goal at the table.
Yeah. Perfect. Thank you very much. Appreciate the update. And I really appreciate the information that you're providing. I mean, total, so, so different from any other negotiation that we have had to provide clarity and transparency about what's happening. I know there are open meetings and anyone could attend, but this is very helpful. So thank you.
And if you guys see any changes you'd like in how it's presented, you should just follow and make sure we adjust.
Yeah, thank you. It's great.
Thank you, Mike. I was putting this together.
It's fine.
9A, moving on to the school year 26-7 calendar approval. Just making mention 26-7 calendar approval. I don't, I think the attachment says 27-8 recommendation final 6-7, but it should be just-
The title up there is incorrect, but the calendar is correct.
The content is just 26-7, which is all we are talking about today. Dr. Ryder.
Yes, I thank the board for the feedback at the most recent work session. The calendar that's being presented for your approval tonight is a reflection of that and the work of the calendar committee. I want to express a thanks to this board at the work session for asking the question of, you know, do you have enough professional development? And we did go ahead and add one date and that would be in May, May 21st of 2027. That makes the student contact days 169 and it adds a day of professional development work. When this was brought to the respective built at the sites, it was met with great enthusiasm and thankfulness because not only will it help them analyze the most recent data that's been accumulated in the spring, it will allow them some time to plan and kickstart them into the next school year. So it's really appreciated. It also allows our, our students to finish school on June 3rd and not have them have to wrap around into the second week of June. And as you notice, we are starting school pre-Labor Day in that year. And we're, we're excited about that. And I think we found a happy medium to allow families to still spend time together at the end of summer and for the school year not to drag into the next summer. So with that being said, one thing I do want to add is you will, we don't have them on here yet. The schools are finalizing that. In fact, they're, I think they're done. I just haven't got them on this calendar yet. Their specific 16 hours, they worked with their volts and their building administration to devise how they wanted to use that. And again, they have given me that information, it's just not on here. It will be attached to this calendar, but it won't change anything with respect to the school days for our students.
So two, two items on the document provided to us. You said that we will have 169 student contact days and that would mean we're reducing fourth quarter to 46 days.
It does say 47 on there.
It says 47 and 170 on the document.
That will need to be changed.
So if we can please change that. And I had to double take because there are no colors or shapes in April. I was like, huh, interesting. Just a month.
We're hardcore.
It's just a month.
Going for it.
Very good. So with those two changes, to, to, whatever the right numbers will be to be whatever it's supposed to be, to make sure that if it's 46 and 169, great. But with that information to the 26-27 calendar, with the only amendment to make sure that the days are accurate, I would appreciate a motion to approve.
I will make that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. And a second from Mr. Shadine. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor for the 26-7 calendar approval signify by aye.
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 Opposed? And that does carry unanimously and 27-8 will come some other time. Perfect.
We're meeting in like January, correct?
Perfect. Thank you so much. 9B, MSBA policies, first read. There is a full slate of items there for you to review. Just a reminder, the, our documents are Rockford-specific that depart from MSBA language. There are, I mean, thank you for striking those things through. And I'm glad it's green line and not red line. More fun, just saying. So those are for your reading and we should be able to come back at our next meeting to approve those. Policy committee, any comment?
This was the heaviest policy lift we've done in my three years.
And we still have another lift shortly with just our regular review. This is just like what we have to do for MSBA for the year. So we have our fall, winter ones that we're in.
We're going to do those combo.
We're going to do those together, so.
You probably thought no one would notice the green lines, which is the red line. Just kidding. All right, so thank you so much. We'll come back to those. Resolution for contributions, Dr. Ryder Hooper.
Once again, I would like to thank our, our donors for both their contributions, time, their talents, and also their financial donations on behalf of the district. I would like to ask the board to extend the gratitude and approve the donations for the month of October.
Thank you so much. And I would like to call out a substantial contribution to our facilities department, which greatly needed and very nice to have happen. So with that, I would appreciate a motion to approve.
I would make a motion to approve the acknowledgement of contribution and donations.
Thank you so much, Mr. Shadine. There's a first, can I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Hilstrom. There's a first, a second, any discussion? Seeing none, although this is a roll call vote. Madam Clark, please.
Kevin Shadine.
Aye.
Jamie Hilstrom, aye. Jessica Johnson, aye. Eric Gordy.
Aye.
Beth Prescott.
Aye.
And that does carry unanimously. Thank you so much. Moving on to 10B, just checking with the folk down the table to make sure dates all look good, but I'm going to read them anyway. Special meeting, election canvassing Wednesday, November 12th for hopefully a great celebration at 7:00 in the district office boardroom. MREA conference, Sunday, November 16th. There are several of our board members attending the conference, yes?
Yep.
Three of you? Very good. Thank you. And that conference is in- And that conference is in?
Brainerd.
Brainerd. Yeah, Craigens. That is November 16 through the 18. Board of Ed work session, Monday, November 24, 5:30 in the district office boardroom, and that regular ed, regular board of ed meeting, Monday, November 24, 6:30 in the district office boardroom. Any changes, problems, issue?
We have a negotiations meeting.
Oh, we have two.
Two.
Next week, October 27 at 3:00 p.m.
In the district office boardroom?
And also on October 30 at 3:00 p.m. in the district office boardroom.
Very good. And those are recorded, and will be able to be put out. Thank you for the updates. That's perfect. Moving on then to item 10C, closed session for negotiations. I would appreciate a motion, sorry. The board will enter into closed session, discuss the negotiation parameters for the EMR and the superintendent contract negotiations pursuant to Minnesota statute 13D dot O3. I would appreciate a motion to go to closed session, please.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. There's a first and a second.
I'll second.
Mr. Shadine with the second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Opposed? And we are officially in closed session at 6:41 p.m. So we're back in open session at 7:10. Same board members present. Our last item is, do, 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 board committee updates. My only board committee update is we had a finance committee where we talked about preliminary budget findings. And it was a pretty decent meeting.
Yeah.
And I had board prep meeting, two of them. We had two board prep meetings.
For the work session and this one?
Oh, all right. Very good. We had two prep board meetings. And that's about it. Sweet. Ms. Johnson?
Oh, Lord. Okay, well, let's see here. I have had calendar committee, two of those. One with Jeff and Jamie, and one with the whole district committee, calendar committee group. Policy job share, policy me, or meeting with Jamie going through that policy, putting it together. We met twice to do that. Retirement committee, we have met. I didn't able, I wasn't able to get it all written out. But the 29th today, and then we met earlier. Just those two? I'm so sorry.
That's fine.
Yeah, I think so. Yeah, so.
Retirement committee, what's retirement?
Retirement, early retirement.
So teacher negotiations, yeah?
Teacher negotiations.
We don't, because we don't have a retirement committee.
No, we don't.
So teachers' negotiations.
Teacher negotiations, subcommittee.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for helping me clarify that. I have also been involved with Masico. So we had our regular board meeting, but I've also had two negotiation committee meetings for their teacher bargaining group. Board work session, referrals for both board work session and today's meeting, policy committee meeting. I think that is it. I also met with Cindy to help with more negotiation stuff, so, yes.
Excellent.
A million meetings, I feel like.
Ms. Hilstrom?
Um, I just wanna say what Jessica said, but mine is some Masico stuff in the board prep. I had negotiations meetings, three of them, plus the subcommittee for the early retirement, the calendar committee, and then the job share policy meetings with Jessica, and just the policy committee in general, the budget policies.
Perfect, thank you. Mr. Shadine?
It's been the negotiation committees meetings and finance committee meetings. Thought the finance committee meeting was really good.